All in the order, please, for our pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have our invitation tonight by Peaking Richard Smith from Church of the Ascension. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. Please come up to the podium here so we can all hear you.
Okay. Usually people don't have trouble.
They might on channel 11.
It's okay? Perfect. All right, good. Let us bow our heads and pray for God's blessing. Almighty God, as we come together tonight, we come with an attitude of gratitude. We are grateful for the many blessings that you continually bestow on us and on our town and on our council. We ask you, Lord, to reach out your hand and guide them tonight and every night in their way. We ask this in the name of Jesus, your Lord. Amen.
Thank you very much, Peaking. Have a good evening. Roll call, Beth.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Councilmember Cantino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Legay.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Archambault.
Here.
Councilmember Dickie is absent.
Thank you. Reminder, please, everyone in council, please speak into the microphone so we can pick up your voice in the audio recording in channel 11. I want to make an announcement here at the beginning that Agenda Item Number Five relating to the Botanical Garden has been removed from this agenda and will be placed on the March 5, 2009 meeting agenda. So if you were here for that, I wanted to make sure you were right off of that. Now we are going into the rotation of the Vice Mayor position. Vice Mayor Henry Legay has done a great job for the last eight months, and thank you very much. And now our Vice Mayor role will move over to Councilmember Archambault. Vice Mayor, Archambault. So, thank you. Thank you for the assistance and absence or if something worse happens to me, thank you very much. All right, Henry. For you.
For you, Henry.
You should be blessed if you don't have one. You're a great help. Thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure.
All right, now we've got another nice recognition here for Samuel Nicholson, who's served on our Board of Adjustment and is going off that board. Please come on up here. We've got something to recognize you with. Thank you. Wow. Thank you very much. Well, here we are. Samuel Nicholson, appreciation for many hours of hard work and dedicated service as board member from February '93 to '94, Vice Chair '94 to '96, and Chairman from '96. Is that right, till 2009?
That's right.
Wow. You should get, really, should get something even more than this, but thank you for serving our town. I know our Board of Adjustment is an important board to serve on, and it's not always the busiest one, which is also very good, but it's an important one. We really appreciate you serving for such a long time and also leading that board. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, now we've got a public appearance or presentation from Judy Conifer, the Executive Director of the River of Time Museum relating to the proposed changes to the museum. Welcome, Judy.
Thank you, Mayor Schlumpf. Good evening, Vice Mayor Archambault, Attorney McGuire, Town Manager Davis, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember McMahon, former Vice Mayor Legay, Dennis Cantino, Councilmember, and Hello Beverly. Thank you all for your help. It is my distinct pleasure to be here this evening representing the L. Allen Cirkshank River of Time Museum. I would like to introduce to you the designer of the plan that we have in place for the addition to the lobby, the joint lobby in the Library Museum Building. Rex Whitty is the gentleman's name. Some of you are already very familiar with his work. He was the lead designer and project manager when the museum exhibits were built by Sunbelt Scenic Studio. Now he is the exhibit designer for the Arizona Museum for Youth in Mesa. So we, with the money that we hope that we'll receive, which we're most grateful for for Proposition 202 and the Fort McDowell Yalapai Nation, we hope that we will enhance the lobby even more with more of Rex's talented design. Rex, Whitty.
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm really not quite sure where to start. I've got some information on the statistics of the materials that I'm going to be using, and I've got a PowerPoint presentation for you to review if you haven't seen it already. So I believe it's somewhere on here.
I think we'd like to see it up there. The council has it for them on the computer, but they put it up there for the public.
All right. I do have some hard copies here that I brought.
This is also online in the council packet for those that are looking online. All right, good.
Okay. When I was asked to do this, I'm in the middle of working on some sculptures now for the exhibits. When I designed the exhibit space five years ago, they asked, the River of Time, asked me if I would consider doing the sculptures for their exhibits. And at the time, I was working for another company, and I says, "I can't do that." I says, "You can hire the company to do that, and I would probably be the one doing it." But they wanted me to do this, and they needed to raise some money. So what happened in the interim is the company is no longer in business, and I had to leave because they no longer afford to pay me. So I've been with the City of Mason now for almost four years. And Judy contacted me two years ago, a little over two years ago, to start the design process of building the maquettes for the sculptures that I'm creating. There's about seven of them to be completed, and at the rate I'm going, I'll be about 90 when I'm done. But I have to do all of this in my spare time, which I get home from work, and then I work in the evenings, and I work on the weekends. So what's happened now since Alan Cirkshank is no longer the president, we would like to honor him by putting his name in front of the River of Time Museum. So they also wanted me to create a wall to amplify what's already in the museum to the outer part of the museum, so people recognize that it's something different other than just a gift store or just another little hole in the wall. People don't know. So we want to dress up the lobby to accent the museum itself, and that's what this presentation is here. So bear with me. I'm just gonna hit a button here. That is my line drawing. Okay, that's where it is. That's the line drawing I started. These panels had to be designed in order to go together so they look seamless, so that it looks like natural rocks. It took a little bit of finagling to do, and as I move on, you'll see how that works. I've got my basic measurements. I still have to go in and take actual hard measurements because this will not be built on site. It will be retrofitted to fit, just like what we did with museum on the interior. And it's scary when you do that because, you know, a little measurement could throw you off, and then the whole thing is off. So I double check and triple check and make sure everything fits before I install it. These are the actual panels. They'll be eight half-inch plywood. It is covered with a urethane foam, and I've got a sample for you. That will then be covered in fiberglass. That's the reason I use the urethane foam, because it will not melt under the fiberglass chemicals. There are other ways that I can do this with plaster, but I wanted to make sure that this was going to be lightweight and safe. Plaster will crack. My fear is with anything that's in the public is vandalism. And I'm afraid that kids are enticed to want to climb this rock wall, even though they shouldn't be able to. A kid can find a way to do it. So I want to make sure they're secure on the wall, and they're safe, and they won't crumble or crack. And that's why they're going to be made out of this material. So the next is the placement of all the panels and where they go. So it's pretty self-explanatory when you look at it. It will look like that when it's finished, and these are renditions. It will look better when it's finished. And the scale of the building itself, so you can see what it looks like. Are there any questions up to this point?
You're taking the roof off the building? As you see, red rock now.
Exactly.
But, modification.
The kiosk in the center there will be totally surrounded by the rock. The rock itself, I call it rock. It's the faux rock. It'll be six inches thick at the base, and that's approximately how far the kiosk sticks out from the wall. So we want to cover that, and then it will gradually, as it gets closer to the top, it won't be six inches thick. I want it to kind of be decent in thickness as it goes to the top. It's not really necessary to keep it that thick all the way up, but I do want it to kind of slope towards the top.
All right, any questions for Rex or for Judy? It looks very nice.
Very nice.
Nice addition. It will bring what's on the inside outside, and those that have not had opportunity to get over to River of Time Museum should get in there. Even for someone that's been here a long time, you learn something about our area. It's a great place.
It's a beautiful museum, and I'm proud to be a part of it, and I have been since the beginning of it. It's, you know, as an artist, an artist wants to leave a legacy somewhere. I believe this is going to be mine, because this is the only thing I've got on my plate right now besides my job. It takes so long to produce these sculptures that it's going to be a while before they're all finished, but it gives everybody a chance to see it.
Well, it's done by the end of March, right?
Oh. Sorry.
What year? Getting Keith.
That will certainly make that entire library lobby much more attractive.
Yes, it will.
To come in there and find this on the left-hand side. It'll be very beautiful.
I'm anxious to give it done, and it won't take as long as it did the Contista Door. I promise you that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck, Judy. All right, next item is presentation two art donations by Parks and Rec Director Mark Meyer. Welcome, Mark. Thank you. I see people behind you enjoying your struggle here, Mayor. I'm making progress here. All right. We're going to see our two art pieces coming forward for us to consider. Need a Lift, which we saw in the package before that the Art Committee was considering, and has obviously now found someone to contribute and purchase, and also Winter View, which is an oil.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Schlumpf and members of the council have, as you mentioned, two pieces to introduce to you this evening. The first piece is a, as you can see, a rather whimsical piece. It is done by Randy Hand titled Need a Lift, and the proposed location will be in the courtyard. And when I bring this back to you at your first meeting in March, I'll have an exact location with a site map for you. Mr. Hand has done a couple of pieces that are in our collection now. One is the Rabbit Chauncey that's over at the playground at Fountain Park, and also George the Tortoise. So it's kind of a theme that he has with whimsical kinds of pieces. The second one is a piece that's done by a local artist, Carlos Haddaway, titled Winter View of the Grand Canyon. Mr. Haddaway is a user and admirer of the park system, and one of the conditions that we'll be talking about at your March meeting is he has asked that it is a large piece, 60 inches wide by, I believe, 40 inches tall, and he's asked that the item be placed in a public area within the lobby of Town Hall here. He's also asked in recognition of the Park and Recreation Staff, and I can honestly say it didn't have anything to do with this, but I will certainly bring it forward. He's asked that the name of, current names of all the people that are full-time staff on the department be thanked in conjunction with this particular piece via plaque. So I will bring those two items forward to your free consideration at the first meeting in March.
Good. Do you have any questions for Mark?
Thank you, Mark.
All right, thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Have anyone with, now we're going to call the public, the speaker cards?
Yes, Mayor Paul Getty.
Hi, good evening, Paul Getty. I'm a resident mayor, council. Agenda item number eight, you will, tonight you will have a presentation by Bill Meyer of the McDowell Mountain Preservation Preserve, and that deals with these two mountains, these two mountains that you can see west of town. I'm simply up here to urge you all to please try to find a way to preserve these mountains for the benefit of the Preserve and also for the beauty of the town. So I'm asking you to please give direction to the staff to develop several alternative plans that can be used depending on which way the wind blows to achieve preservation of these mountains. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getty. Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
All right, now I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call, thank you. Andrew.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Aye.
Councilmember Legay.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Cantino.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Archambault.
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero.
Thank you very much. Going to the regular agenda. First item is consideration of canceling the February 19, 2009 regular council meeting at my request due to the meeting with the El Salvador's Minister of Foreign Affairs that same evening. Could I get a motion to cancel our February 19 meeting?
I move. Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Are there any speaker cards on that?
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Mayor Six Zero.
Thank you. Item, the next item is consideration of appointing three citizens to the Board of Adjustment for a two-year term beginning February 1 and ending January 31, 2011. And I don't have my notes, so I have to find my notes here. So give me a moment here. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. And I move to appoint Richard Gold, Tom Kovak III, and Robert Rowe for this term. May I get a second?
Second.
Any speaker cards on this side?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Any discussion on council? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Mayor Six Zero.
Thank you very much. I'll let you know. Thank you very much. Next, we've got one report for two items. Mr. Brian New will talk to us about special event application for St. Patrick's Day celebration scheduled March 14, 2009, which will require closure of Soro Boulevard north of Avenue of the Fountains to Palisades Boulevard from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then the next item is a consideration of special event liquor license application submitted by Sons of Amvet Squadron 7 for support of the St. Patrick's Day celebration. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. It's about time of year again. We're had a nice relaxing January, and we're going to start into the special event season again, so you'll be seeing a little bit more of me and our department. We're here tonight to talk about the St. Patrick's Day celebration, some changes this year. For the first time, at least that I can remember, we're going to be doing it on a weekend that doesn't fall on St. Patrick's Day, so there's some definite advantages to that, we hope this year, in that Saturday is a, you know, weekend, more people can probably come on a traditional St. Patrick's Day, which is a Tuesday this year, to come out and see our fountain, enjoy our festivities that we've got planned. So celebrations from 10:30 to 6:30. Some pictures from past events. This year, we're working closely with Doug Schmidt, who's kind of taking the lead as our chairman of this group. The committee made up of the Chamber of Commerce, and Doug leading us, and the town staff, and our Parks and Recreation, and also the Fountain Hills Community Foundation. And as many of you know, the St. Patrick's Day tradition goes back to the early 80s, and, you know, Jay and Mike have been around for a while, and Keith, he probably remember when they started this kind of stuff up. So it's one of my favorite events every year, and I've been around for many of them. And as, of course, the most anticipated part of the day is dying the fountain green, which we've been doing twice on the day of our celebrations for the past couple of years. It'll be at noon and 5:00 p.m. Some highlights of our kids' activities, we're working on a kids' parade along the sidewalk part of the day. We've got lots of games, crafts, bounce houses. As you can see, we did some of those in the bottom photo a few years back, where we had quite a few things for the kids to climb all over, large slides, boxing ring. Of course, one of the things that's been pretty popular the past few years is our Irish entertainment. We've got the Phoenix Scottish Pipe Band that usually joins us at noon, right as the fountain goes green for the first time. Booyah, which plays quite a few of the Irish pubs throughout the valley, Knockabouts, Irish band from Flagstaff, and Oceans Apart, which is a duo that plays in town quite a bit. They've actually played the library and down at our celebrations for a few years now. One thing that we're adding this year that's a little bit new is a community stage. Instead of just music throughout the day, we're going to have another stage in another part of the park where local groups will be able to get up there, whether it's a dance club, a karate demonstration, working with the library to do a story of St. Patrick and a snake craft, and some snake demonstrations with reptile vendors. And then we're going to be working with the youth theater, the apple core for some face painting and things like that. So these are just a few of the things. New this year is an admission to the event. One of the things that we've, we're probably going to struggle a little bit more with in the next couple of years is sponsorships from companies. And so one way to help offset the costs of the event would be to, instead of getting sponsorships, which we still hope to get some of, but a $5 fee for adult 18 and over. And then the net proceeds, this is new this year, will be benefiting lots of local charities, which will also take part in the event and bring their own little thing to what we'll be doing down there. I'll let Doug talk a little bit more about that. Food and beverage, working with some of the nonprofit groups, I believe, Colana's, possibly Rotary, and also some of the businesses to get Irish-American food down there at a reasonable price. The Amvet's, some of the Amvet Squadron 7 will be working with the liquor license for this event. And of course, we'll have law enforcement there. Something that's new for us, at least as a town event, is that we're going to be working for recycling, which kind of goes along with the whole town's recycling efforts, and we'll be having 40 bins throughout the park for both trash and recycling. So we think there'll be plenty of opportunities for people to dispose of things properly this year. And waste management will also have a booth down in the park to talk about recycling and environmentally friendly practices. Fiscal impact, this is always included on our Agenda Action forms. We've included funds in the budget this year. Our expenses are approximately $35,000 for the day, and our revenues, as we talked about before, will be generated from admission fees, sponsorships, and vendor sales. And with the net proceeds from that, after the town's costs are recovered, will be going to the various charities. Traffic restrictions that are proposed are closing Avenue of the Fountains from, or not Avenue of the Fountains, Soro from Avenue of the Fountains to Palisades, as we do for many of the events, such as the movie in the park and the Oktoberfest and things like that, being at 6:00 a.m. the day of the event to allow vendors and staff and everybody to get set up throughout the day, early in the day before we get going with the actual event at 10:30. And parking will be available throughout downtown Fountain Hills area and also our park, parking lots. There's kind of an idea of the way we hope to have everything laid out the day of, and showing the different vendor tents, the corporate tents, the beer distribution areas, main stages, and community stage area, and portalets. So that's kind of our vision for the day, and as you know, it all kind of lays out the day of. In closing, this is kind of the special event works towards a strategic plan that we've been kind of working on throughout the past year, and that's to strengthen our small-town identity and to increase community initiatives to strengthen our small-town character. And one of those objectives of that goal is to coordinate with or facilitate with community partners the expansion or creation of up to four events that would grow to 2,000 or more, not 200 or more over the next two years. So we think we're doing that with the events that we've been working on over the past year. So with that, I'd just like to ask Doug to kind of add a few things with regards to the charities and sponsorship and things that he's been working on.
Don't get too shy.
And then we'll answer some questions after that. Doug?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the opportunity. This has been four years in the making, and I'm thrilled to be standing up here in front of you. And I'd like to note, Mark and Brian and the parks, our town manager, our mayor, and the council people, you've all helped in some way. I've talked to many of you about the details, and so tonight we're here to answer any questions you might have. So with that in mind, instead of maybe going through something, let me answer any questions from your part.
Thank you, Doug. Thanks again for all your energies to make this even better for our community as well and the organizations and everyone all around. Councilmember McMahon?
Thank you, Mayor. Doug, are you running a separate community stage?
Yes, good question.
How big?
This year, the stage itself, we have two separate locations in the park. And the concept for wrapping the park with the fence is that we don't have a beer area where you have to sit, and maybe you have kids there that are at the end of the park and you have to finish and go there. So in talking with the park, we fenced off the entire area so that we could have a beer garden on both locations. The performance pad where it is now will be the adult-themed type kind of programs and the traditional Irish music. And the community stage will be down by the Fountain Plaza. And that stage side, I don't have the.
We're about 20 by 20, right?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Well, I think obviously it's not on St. Patrick's Day this year because we found it was so beneficial to have it on the weekend, I think, as well, and the town working in conjunction with the other organizations this year now as one. I think it's going to be terrific. I mentioned a lot of the things that I'm excited about, certainly hitting our, meeting one of our goals, you know, to enforce our, or enhance our small-town character, enforce our small-town character. But having the public-private partnership here is just great to see. I like how you're engaging and supporting our local charities. That's ongoing, I know, from what you've been doing and what you've been passionate about. Equally important is supporting our local organizations that raise money to support efforts, to do more support for efforts around our community. The community stage to highlight the local talents, a fun idea. That should be real interesting. And then, of course, it's a great celebration and fun down there to see the green fountain, and can also benefit the businesses that are in the downtown or town center area to work off the crowd, and I expect you'll have quite a good crowd there this year, much larger than what's been there in the past. And from the looks of it, it's really going to be spread out around the park to facilitate all those folks. So I wish you the best, and again, thank you for all your energies and efforts that you and the many volunteers are putting towards this.
And there are many, up to 100 right now that we have, and we haven't put the call out yet. So this is a tremendous effort, and again, I appreciate that, too.
Again, thanks to that for reaching out and making it happen as best we can as well. Any questions? Thank you very much. All right, I'll try to hear. Archambault?
Okay, I haven't called everything out. I got the M going. Doug, where's that fencing? I'm looking at this diagram here. Is the fencing right almost at the corner of where Plaza Fountain Side is? I got the M going, all right. Doug, where's that fencing? I'm looking at this diagram here, is the fencing right almost at the corner of where Plaza Fountain Side is? There we go, that kind of helps.
Yeah, the fencing actually goes up right to where the sidewalk kind of Y is just east of the Plaza Fountain Side.
Oh, I got you, okay. I want to make sure we weren't pesting off the splash bar.
No, no, that's still, that and the restrooms and everything is over there, so there'll still be opportunities for people to hit the playgrounds and things without having to get into the actual event if they want.
Thanks for that clarification, Brian. Great event, looking forward to it.
Mayor, thank you. Can Brian anything else on presentation before we consider these two items?
No. No, I think we're good. That's everything on the event, and of course, the special event liquor license is there, and we're happy to work with the Sons of the Amvets on this one, and they'll be having some green beer out there, I'm sure, so thank you for your time.
Can we bring these and get a green beer?
I'm sure, I'm sure, I don't know where those came from, little rubber guns, I guess, so. But yeah, I'm sure they'll have those down at the Amvet, so thank you.
Mayor. Thank you, Brian. Councilmember, Lojai?
Whoever, whatever. Brian, do you have a few new interns that are going to be helping you out with this event?
Actually, we do. I'm glad you asked that. We have two interns, as we usually do in the spring, and Nicole Colinger from Indiana University actually put together our PowerPoint tonight, so we know she's got some good computer skills.
I was wondering if you could introduce to the public our new interns.
And yes, you'll be seeing, these are my right-hand people, Nicole Colinger from Indiana University and Megan Leonard from the University of Illinois Champagne-Urbana.
Very good.
They're happy to be here from the Midwest. It's a little bit warmer right now, so.
And how long will they be with us?
They will be with us through the end of April, so a 14-week internship that helps us out a lot during our special event time and also helps them get their credits for graduating, so.
You're welcome, enjoy your stay.
Thank you.
I have a niece and a nephew of Champagne-Urbana as we speak.
It's a great place.
Doug are here right now.
It's great to have you. Thanks for helping out with Mayor's Youth Council also.
Yes, we'll be handling, as many of you know, Kathy Worrell, our recreation coordinator, started her maternity leave today, so it's also very helpful to have the interns around to kind of cover during that time, so as they leave, Kathy will be coming back and they'll be taking care of lots of different things of special interest and hopefully giving them a lot of good medical experiences as they get out into the workplace after the graduation, so.
Very good.
We're happy to have them.
It's a good experience for you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
All right, now, look for a motion to approve the special event application and special event liquor license as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May I stick to?
All right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, we'll see you at the event.
Thank you. Glad you covered both items, we're safe on that. Thank you. Next item is presentation discussion with possible direction to staff regarding the status of the state trust land adjacent to McDowell Mountain Preserve. Mark?
Mayor Sloan and members of the council, a number of weeks ago at a McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission meeting, the issue, as was discussed earlier, of the future of those mountains to the west of us and the community here that we can all see, came up for discussion. The commission themselves have done a great deal of research, at least initially now, looking at different things, and tonight, I want to turn the podium over to the chair of the MMPC, Bill Myers, who's going to talk a little bit more in detail. We also have this item on your agenda for your joint meeting with the group as well.
Thank you, Mark. Welcome, Mr. Myers, thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you very much for having me, Mayor Sloan, council members. My name is Bill Myers, I live at 14989 North Zapata, North Heights, and I'm thrilled to death to be able to talk to you for a few minutes this morning on those mountains to the west of us. I want to also thank you for getting a full commission. Just recently, you counted, appointed three more members, so we now have a full complement of seven members. Thank you very much. Actually, on the screen now is four bullet points that summarizes the letter that hopefully is in your pocket. It's a three-page letter with three attachments to it, and so I'll be very brief, this, these four bullet points summarize that letter to some extent. We're actually talking about mountains, uh-oh, that are west of town, here's a picture of them. This picture was actually taken a few yards from where we're sitting or standing right now, just right on the Avenue of the Fountains, looking pretty much west. These two mountains are, can be seen from many east-west streets, even though we don't have them quite east and west, but many streets in town, you can see those mountains, they're very prevalent, and they're fairly high. They're about 3,800 feet at their peak. You can also see in this picture some of the preserve, that is the Fountain Hills Preserve, which is a line about a third of the way up a mountain, sometimes referred to as a jeep trail or more commonly referred to as the promenade. That's on a mountain that is about half the way up, and you can barely make it out on the picture, that mountain is in the preserve. The two tall ones are not in anybody's preserve. So those are the mountains that we're talking about today. Oh, great, thank you very much. If you wouldn't mind, let me go back to that, just to be clear, uh-oh. That is the jeep trail, the promenade. This is the outline of one of the mountains in the existing preserve of Fountain Hills. We have about 740 acres in preserve that town owns. Scottsdale owns another 200 acres in the town of Fountain Hills, so total is about 940 acres in the existing preserve. The state owns these two mountains. The state of Arizona owns the Twin Mountains that overlook our town. They actually own these mountains, they're included in about three and three-four square miles that the state trust land department still owns. They're in the city, these mountains are in the city limits of Scottsdale, and they're in their preserve study area, but they're not in their preserve. They're not in anybody's preserve. Point number two, the state will sell these mountains to the highest bidder. I don't want to frighten anybody or say it's imminent, it certainly is not going to be in the next month or two or three, it could be quite a ways down the road, but the state is mandated under current laws to sell this, these mountains and that whole preserve or whatever they own near the preserve to the highest bidder. Currently, there are no controls on the highest bidder, whoever the highest bidder is will own that property. It could be that if they're sold, the highest bidder may not have preservation ideas in Before, I'm retired now, but my real job six months ago was in a development area myself, so I, shopping centers and land development, that type of thing. In that position, I became aware of some folks who, actually, two groups of folks who buy ground that's about 50 years out. Most of the ground they buy is between the two big cities in our state, some up to the west of Phoenix. This would be the kind of ground that those folks would be looking at. In addition, any developer, anybody can bid on the ground as it stands right now when it comes up for auction. Again, I don't want to overstate the case, it's not going to happen right away. The state doesn't know if they're going to sell it in one chunk or multiple chunks. They haven't done an appraisal yet on the property, so it's going to be a little ways, but they, when we had the meetings with the state, they couldn't really give us much direction on how long it would be before they sell those mountains. Be clear, that's their intent, that's the law, they have to sell those mountains. Number three, the town council, our town council currently has no authority to control the development on the mountains. Unfortunately, they're just outside of our city limits. Here's a map showing the existing 940 acres preserve for Fountain Hills. That line right there is the boundary between Fountain Hills and Scottsdale. These two mountains are about a quarter mile, maybe a little bit more, from our boundary, so they're real close to it and really, literally shadow our town. Sometimes during the year, when the sun moves around, you'll see the shadow on this mountain from those mountains. The fourth point is, the town may want to consider alternatives to gain some kind of control of these mountains. I think it's important for all the people and all the citizens in this town to have those remain as preserve. I've been talking to several realtors and others who think if there's development on those mountains, it might have a deleterious effect on the values of our property in this town and not only from a individual home value, but perhaps if there's some hotels or other things, but if there may be deleterious to the retail segment in our town. The mountains, I can tell you also, are developable. I've heard some comments from some folks that say, "Don't worry about those mountains, they're so high and there's so many problems, they can't be developed." But I can tell you that they are developable, and as we know, there's a paved road at the top of Thompson Peak now, which is higher than these, a two-story building and a bunch of towers on it, and that was happened decades ago, but these are developable. Not every square foot, but there's, it's very good ground for development. Listen, I didn't want to take too much time, but I just wanted to make, this is really more of an information-type meeting, just to let the town council know that there's some mountains over there that are developable, that we would like, or I would like, to have preserved, and hopefully, the council will take some action to either have the commission do some work, or the staff, or outside parties, to see what alternatives there are, the pros and cons of each alternative. We have a lot of questions ourself on the commission, I think that's why we collectively wrote that letter. I have some answers, but not a whole lot, but I'd be happy to try and answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Myers, any questions for Mr. Myers, or Vice Mayor Arshimbo?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Myers, can you tell me, and I'm looking, if you could go back to that map that shows where the Twin Mountains are, yeah, there you go, can you tell me where the state park north of us is and boundaries with those, that particular area? Is that, that boundary up there?
Generally, right there is the state park boundary. The boundary goes up that way.
So it doesn't go west?
Pardon?
It doesn't go that way?
No, it doesn't, doesn't go west. This, this line here actually goes quite a bit north.
Okay, and then that state park would be on the east side of that line?
Yes, that's correct.
Or the county park, sorry. So those, that state trust land is accessible from roads in Scottsdale currently?
No, I don't believe it is. I'm not positive about that, but I don't, I don't think there's any roads up there to it right now.
Is it surrounded by any other preserve besides ours?
This is, preserve is in Scottsdale. I don't know exactly if it completely surrounds it or not, it may, I don't know that for a fact. This is three and three-four square miles right here, that's a square mile, square mile, square mile, and three-fourths of a square mile. Most of this, if not all, is preserved now by Scottsdale.
Is currently preserved by Scottsdale?
Well, that's my understanding.
That's what I'd like you guys to investigate.
Sure, those, that's a very good question, yes. But about lying in the letter, one of the possible alternatives that could happen to develop that ground, it'd be possible for Scottsdale to sell some ground somewhere in the future if they needed to have money for whatever they needed to have money for.
Yeah, I read that in the letter.
Good. That's one of about a dozen alternatives that we came up with. Any other questions?
Yes, councilmember, Lojai?
Thanks for the presentation and your interest in preserving this property. I'm just trying to get my arms wrapped around the site, and I think Councilman Arshimbo was kind of going the same direction that I'd like to go. Currently, is it fair to say that the mountains that you're referring to are surrounded either by preserve or county park? So does, the land abutting those mountains is either preserve or county park? Is there any private property that abuts the mountains that you're referring to?
Excellent question, I don't have a good answer for that, not that I'm aware of, except those are mountains and this all is state ground.
Yeah.
Okay, now, I think you're referring to, is that all Scottsdale?
Well, it's, it's, oh, I see, I'm sorry.
That's all state ground, and I believe this is preserve now, but I'm not positive about that.
Okay, so that, that obviously would be a very important thing for us to, for y'all to take a look at. Your hypothesis is, however, if in fact it is surrounded by preserve or state or county park, that Scottsdale may sell off a section to allow access into that, because currently, those mountains are landlocked with undevelopable property.
Generally, I'd say yes, but I'd have to figure that out for sure.
All right, and that's what I'd like to learn about.
Yeah, now, can laws be changed? If you look back 50 years, there's been a huge amount of changes in the last 50 years. Attitudes have changed a lot. The next 50 years, many attitudes will change. Maybe people won't be of the preservation mind in 50 years that they are now, certainly they weren't 50 years ago. So that's part of our concern, this is a long-term type play. Scottsdale owns that piece right in there, for example. We don't own that, so it could, it could be something to go.
Vice Mayor Arshimbo?
Thank you, Mayor. Got another question for you. You said you were down there at the state trust land office. Did you venture to propose that, to see if the state trust land commissioner would be agreeable to parcel off that section and maybe sell it to us at a preserve price?
It's a two-part question. We asked if they could, when they would sell it, to start with, I got a vague answer, and if they were going to sell it all in one chunk, or if they'd slice it up, just, or perhaps another thing we suggested was just go right down the ridge, 300 feet over, and make that a line. The answer is where it's just too early in their process to divide it up right now. As far as, I think the second part of your question, can we get a deal on it, so to speak, they have to, by law, sell it to the highest investor, or highest bidder. No questions asked.
And I'm thinking that you've been paying attention to the legislation that have been trying to get to the ballot box that hasn't quite made it, disappointing the past election that we didn't get the particular legislation which would allow the state trust land commissioner to deem the land suitable for what he thought would work the best. I would hope that the legislature would maybe go down that path again and get that in front of the voters, because I think this is the prime time to get something like that passed. So I think we, just from our questions, I think we've given you some good direction to maybe go forward with, to start investigating. Maybe we're going to have our meeting with you...
24th.
As of 24th, I'm trying to think what the date was.
I think it's great information for us, when I caught you in the parking lot, I don't think I was aware that these two mountains were not in someone's preserve, assumably Scottsdale's preserve, so I think this is great public information for sure. These are, in fact, annexed into Scottsdale, I'm assuming this is Scottsdale land?
I believe it's Scottsdale land.
Okay, do you know if that's the fact, Andrew? I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that Scottsdale's border is all the way from the northernmost tip of ours to the southernmost tip till you come down to the reservation. I don't think there are any gaps.
So the state land was annexed into Scottsdale at some point?
Apparently, and we don't know how far over that goes to the west.
Okay, and then, and that Scottsdale hasn't, you said they're studying it for preservation?
Scottsdale has a preservation study area, which is 36,000 acres. That's included in that. Of that 36,000, they've spent 600 million so far to buy 19,000. They have up to a billion dollars to spend. Sounds like government...
So they could conceivably purchase that land?
Pardon?
They could conceivably purchase that land?
They could. Right now, whenever it's put up for bid, anybody, anybody can. And the growing smarter funds, which I mentioned in the letter, are available to cities and towns and many other, about 120 other entities within the state. I've also been told by some of the folks that under current conditions, it looks like the billion dollars may not be enough to buy all of their 36,000 acre study area. So they're hoping, as you were indicating, that the state makes some kind of adjustments to the constitution to be able to get a... to the constitution to be able to get a better price on that for preservation.
It seems like there's some good questions that came up here to help direct you and potentially, and staff, to consider it in the MMPC to come get some answers, and if those answers warrant bringing things back to us, that'd be great, and appreciate all the time you've spent on this, particularly helping us to understand access to the land, you know, if it in fact could be improved and developed, how, you know, how would they get access to that land if it's, if it is in fact all preserved around there? Perhaps this is little less to be concerned about, whether it's all annexed, and some of the other questions that were brought up that you have. We certainly appreciate the energies the MMPC's put towards this. At least you made quite a few people now aware that those Twin Mountains are not in fact in a preserve at this point.
I think we have an opportunity to take a look at it before things develop, what it boils down to. I look forward to meeting you folks on the 24th, and God bless.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We're not going to make any motions there. I don't think we need to. Okay, that's good enough. They've heard some discussion right, Andrew? They ask any questions on that? No. Okay. Next item's consideration of approving Resolution 2009-01, abandoning whatever right, title, and interest in the town has in certain easterly half right-of-way width of Mary Monday Drive, and a 10-foot public utility easement, landscape easement, and sidewalk easement located at the westerly property line of Town Center 2, Lot 1, as recorded with various easements retained with stipulations. Mr. Harrell, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The item on your agenda is a proposal to abandon the easterly half right-of-way of Mary Monday Drive or Walk, and also an existing 10-foot easement alongside of that. The applicant in this case is the Roman Catholic Diocese of Phoenix. On the map, you see Mary Monday Drive, which was originally platted as a roadway, but currently has a sidewalk on it, and I don't know that anyone has any intention of constructing a roadway on that alignment. The proposal is to abandon the easterly half of that, which you see shaded, and also a easement, a 10-foot easement just east of the right-of-way. Be abandoned to the slot adjacent to it, which is owned by the Catholic Church. In the abandonment, the town will be retaining a number of easements within the abandonment Those easements will include a 10-foot sidewalk easement right adjacent to the right-of-way we still have. It will include a sewer easement and drainage easement along the south side where there is sewer and drainage, and the entire thing, the entire right-of-way abandonment will include a no-bill easement, which will refer to no buildings and no parking lots in that All the affected utility companies have been notified and approved of this, and staff does recommend approval of this. Be happy to answer any questions that you have of it. There are a number of stipulations with respect to this.
Would you mind going through those stipulations?
Actually, two stipulations. The one regards that the church will take over operation and maintenance of the sidewalk that's in there, and then they'll also take over operation and maintenance of the landscaping that's in the abandoned area, as well as all the landscaping and irrigation at the Long Avenue to Vida Buena and along El Lago, along the front edges there. Those were given to the town as a part of the platte, when MCO platted it. We did receive three letters on this abandonment, one from the Vida Buena Association, who had met with the Catholic Church and were in agreement with this abandonment. They had a number of things that they had agreed to with the church, and we did receive two from adjacent homeowners, who apparently were not in agreement with their homeowners' association. We did respond to the four points made by one of the letters, and the other letter was really just a concern for the open space there. Be happy to answer any other questions, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harrell?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, in reference to the letters from the citizens, your response to one of them was very good, and I thought it answered all their concerns. Do you know if they were all right once they got your letter?
I have not spoken to them, have not heard from them. I do not know. All I have is their address, and so responded to that address.
Any other questions? Councilmember Leger?
Randy, I noticed in your stipulations, further up in your document, you refer to the no-bill to ensure that there'll be neither any buildings or an extension of their proposed parking lot onto that right-of-way or the easement that they're requesting for abandonment. However, you don't have that noted in the stipulation. Is it necessary to put in the stipulation or not? I mean, just to make it a little clearer.
Mayor, Councilman Leger, I don't believe it's necessary, since it is on Exhibit B to the resolution itself. That'll be a recorded document, and so that'll actually, I govern, once it is recorded.
I understand that. I just think it might be clearer for the homeowners to understand that, in that there's been conversations with them, where I was involved, and it was their understanding that that would be noted as a stipulation.
Mayor, Councilman Leger, the stipulations need to be completed before we will actually record the abandonment, and the easements on here will, you know, are the legal document that is recorded down at the county in perpetuity, so that's why we follow this better in the...
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Arshimbo?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, that, we're basically just moving that sidewalk easement over to the middle of that existing area that's there now, or is that right where the sidewalk is now, just there?
Mayor, Councilman Arshimbo, yes. The sidewalk in the end, there's a little bit out of the right-of-way we still have and into that sidewalk easement, not a whole lot, but...
So that will remain as a public utility, landscape, and sidewalk easement?
Mayor, Councilman Arshimbo, that's correct.
So nobody has to worry about, there's going to be a street right down through there?
Well, Mayor, Councilman Arshimbo, we still do have 40-foot of right-of-way in there, and so I guess it would be theoretically possible to put a street in there, but I don't know, I've never heard anyone in the town express any interest in doing that.
Randy, you also mentioned in your staff reports that the particular piece of property has an HPE on it, and it's on that particular end of the lot. I don't know if you have a picture of that particular lot with you tonight, but you and I viewed that lot in your office, and what's concerning me currently is, if we abandon this easement and we give that to that property owner, and they decide they want to move that HPE so that they can put some buildings on there, they still have to use that square footage of HPE and move it somewhere on the lot, but with doing nothing else, could they use that, that 42 feet as part of the HPE?
Mayor, Councilman Arshimbo, that would be a town council decision, and, I mean, only you can decide whether they could do that or not.
Well, currently, nothing's restricting them from doing that. If they said, okay, we have, I'm going to pick some fictitious number, 20,000 square feet of HPE, we want to segregate it and say, well, some of it's over here, some of it's over here on the lot, and then we also want to use this 42 feet as part of the HPE. That could be done, correct?
Mayor, Councilman Arshimbo, they could request that from you, but it is your decision.
So I could make an amendment that, would it be appropriate for me to make an amendment that this particular dedication of this 42 feet to that property owner cannot be used as an HPE, since we already have it as preserved space? I wouldn't want to duplicate the square footage. That could be, would that be an appropriate amendment, Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, any stipulations you want to put on abandonment of this piece of property that are acceptable to the property owner are within your realm? It's an abandonment of a piece of property that the town currently is right entitled to, with some odd transition from the road districts, but nonetheless, that's an appropriate condition, as is anything else you'd like to do, noting that that condition also could be removed at a later date by the council if deemed appropriate.
Understand, but it would take action for them to do that, rather than a proposal from a lot owner?
As would placing HPE over this area. You will all have to approve the location of a hillside protection easement on the site, so either way, the council's going to get another bite at the apple before this area could be used as HPE.
It seems to me that, when I saw that piece of property, and we were talking about, you know, where they might place their structures on a piece of property, it was apparent to me that they were going to have to move that HPE to be able to utilize the best spot of the lot. And one of the concerns that I've always had is that developers will often come to us, and they'll have a big piece, like a town center section, and they'll say, okay, we have to preserve this many, this much square footage, so we're going to put it all over here. And that allows them to develop this other area, which is perfectly acceptable. What I don't want to see happen is, this particular lot owner say, well, I'm burdened with this big piece of HPE, and so therefore, I want a little bit of relief by using this 42 feet. I think, in my book, they bought that lot, this HPE rides with that lot, they knew it was there when they had, when they bought the lot. I believe they have the right to move it around on that lot, and they can do, you know, I don't really have any restrictions as far as that goes, but I, since we already had what's considered Mary Monday Drive available to us, and my book is preserved or open space, I don't want to duplicate that by saying, well, yeah, you can use that now for HPE, and then that frees up some more portion of their lot. So I want to, I guess I don't want to enrich them, you know, by adding additional footage that they could disturb. So I'm going to make a motion that we add another staff stipulation that the property being deeded over to this particular lot owner cannot be utilized as an HPE.
That's an additional stipulation?
Uh huh.
Do we need a motion first?
Just made it.
That's our motion. So stipulated with the addition, additional stipulation?
Well, that's when we get back to the main motion.
Okay.
One question, Brad.
All right, got a first and a second? All in favor? Are we ready for the discussion? Or do we, yeah, any discussion on that? Thank you.
I think that is something that I can support, having been contacted by the folks in that area a couple months ago, and have an opportunity to speak with Randy and those involved. There was a significant concern amongst the residents about the HPE being transferred, which would allow that church, particularly the parking lot, to move within, very close to the property line, and they were very concerned about that, the noise, the traffic, the light pollution, so forth and so on, so I think it's a very wise stipulation.
I think that, and I think you didn't quite say it this way, but I think in light of the fact that the town is giving, and the easements are being abandoned, you don't want it to detrimentally affect the property owner to the other side by allowing somebody to build a larger structure closer. I think it was smart to have a stipulation that that wouldn't be a buildable area, or even for a parking lot, so I think that was, that's a good move on the part of staff to stipulate that, but I think this takes that next step to where you still have the rights to build the property, and you've got HPE, but you're not going to utilize the additional land that you're now capturing through this effort to benefit you by moving your property, your building structure potentially closer to the existing property. That's good. Any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor six zero.
All right. All right, do we, is this, we need to vote on the main motion? Yeah, thank you. Any other discussion or questions for Randy? I look for a motion to approve with the stipulations.
So moved.
Mayor, could I clarify? I didn't hear anybody make a motion, the first motion.
You mean the amendment?
I heard the amendment, but I didn't hear a first motion to approve Resolution 2009-01.
I don't think we had one yet. I think that's why I was wondering if it was just a new stipulation.
If we didn't have a main motion, then that is the main motion with the new stipulation.
Okay.
So you don't need another one.
Okay, so we're done.
We're done.
Good job, Randy. Good job, everybody. Thank you very much. All right, next item, we're going to have two items in one presentation. Item's on consideration of Resolution 2009-06, adopting by reference the Drainage Policies and Standards from Maricopa County, Arizona, and consideration of Ordinance 9-02, adopting by reference of the Drainage Policies and Standards from Maricopa County, Arizona, mending Chapter 14 of the Town Code accordingly, and providing penalties for violations. Mr. Reese?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm here to share some information with you regarding these two considerations. Town Code Article 14-7, Uniform Drainage Regulations, currently does not reflect the current editions published by Maricopa County. The current language reflects this, references this manual here, which was adopted back in 2005 by the town. Since then, standards have been updated and published by the Flood Control District of Maricopa County, and that is now known as the Drainage Policies and Standards Manual. The Drainage and Policy Standards document is used by the Town Engineering Section, and it's used in concert with three other manuals known as the Design Drainage Manuels, and that's those manuals right there, and they are known as the Hydrology, Hydraulics, and Erosion Controls. This manual, if adopted, also does support the Stormwater Management Program that the town has, and that is in reference to the illicit discharge of pollutants, and that what it does is prohibits the discharge of pollutants into the stormwater system, which now the current policy does not address. There are no risks, well, excuse me, the only risks that are related to this, if we do not adopt the ordinance, is that we're enforcing old ordinances. Staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution 09-06, adopting by reference the Drainage Policies and Standards from Maricopa County, Arizona, and to adopt Ordinance 09-02 relating to Town Code Chapter 14-7, Uniform Drainage Regulations. I am through with my presentation, I will answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards on that?
No, Mayor.
All right, request a motion to approve Resolution 2009-06.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion or questions for the staff? Very good, good presentation, Raymond. Thank you. Look, we've got a motion in a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Do we need another motion for the next ordinance? The ordinance itself, or are we good to go? You both, thank you. I'll look for a motion to approve Ordinance 9, I'm sorry, 09-02.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Thank you. Next item's consideration of a services agreement with 3D International Inc. in the amount of $190,401 for the Alamosa Sidewalk Improvement. Tom or Randy?
This is a consideration in agreement with 3D International in the amount of $190,401.33 for the Alamosa, for construction, the Alamosa Sidewalk Project. You can see the... You can see the project on the board up there, the project is in red. Plans for this sidewalk along the south side of Alamosa were prepared using pedestrian design assistance grants from MAG, and this item will contract the construction of this sidewalk by piggybacking on a job order contract of the Mojave Educational Services Cooperative with 3DI. Their scope and cost proposal were in your packet, their total price is $190,401.33. Our designers' cost estimate for this project was $185,000 back over a year ago, and the town's budget is $245,000 for this. The project basically consists of constructing a six-foot wide meandering sidewalk on the south side of Alamosa Avenue. It runs from almost to the charter school at the end of the existing sidewalk, over to Del Cambray, where there's a complex consisting of Boys and Girls Club, Four Peaks Park, and Four Peaks School. The sidewalk will butt up against the existing driveways, and it will meander to miss most of the existing features in there. Along the Fontana Villas frontage lane, which is over here toward the easterly side of the sidewalk, there's a bunch of large trees that the HOA, that are going to be removed, the HOA did request that, and staff does recommend award of the Alamosa Avenue sidewalk project to 3D International in the amount of $190,401.33. Brian Lewis from 3DI is here tonight, and he can answer questions if I'm unable to. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right. I'll look first for a motion to approve a contract with 3DI International Inc. to construct the Alamosa Avenue sidewalk for $190,401.33. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
How about a second?
Second.
All right, discussion or questions for staff? Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, the grant for the design, were there any stipulations connected with that grant as to a timeframe that the actual project would have to take place?
Mayor, Councilman Hanson, yes, there was. The, the contract with the council approved several years ago requires the town either construct or make substantial progress toward constructing the sidewalk and the sidewalk on Del Cambray within a five-year period after completion of the design.
And what would that date be? I mean, just, you know?
We're probably, well, that was, what, six, eight months ago, 10 months ago, something like that, so we've, we've got about four years left unless we were granted an extension on that.
Thank you.
And along those lines, what was the design cost that the grant would cover roughly? The difference between the $245 and the $190?
No, no, Mayor, it wasn't. I don't have the figure right at hand, I think it was about $60,000.
Okay. Councilmember?
Were there ever any Fountain Hills contractors bids to go out for this?
Mayor, Councilman Cantino, this is a piggyback contract, we did not bid this contract. In fact, we do not have the project documents prepared such that we could bid it. It would take substantially more effort and substantially more cost to prepare contract documents that we, that would be bidable on an open, public contract.
So what you're saying is no?
I'm saying we were piggybacking on the existing service contract, which is a recognized procedure. I can tell you that I do know that, that this contractor does have in his, you know, is one of his contractors for this project, Fountain Hills contractor, and several of the contractors have, in Fountain Hills, have submitted quotes of subcontractors on this project, so.
Randy, what's the benefit of doing the piggybacking?
Mayor, the piggybacking saves us a lot of effort in, first of all, preparing good specifications and contract documents. It allows us to go under a existing format, and the Mojave contract is hundreds of pages long. I mean, certainly, if we prepared specs and bid documents for this, it'd be much less than that, but that is a substantial effort, and we have not gone through that. We had intended to have this, contract this as a part of our annual sidewalk contract, but we no longer have that, so that's why we're going this route.
So what's the benefit, what, why did you choose to go about the piggybacking just generally versus going out for regular bidding?
First of all, the savings in time and in cost effort. I believe this process was recommended by the town attorney, is it, am I, no, Andrew? Okay.
You can certainly point to me if you'd like, but the, the piggyback process is generally used in order to not duplicate efforts that another community's gone through to do a very similar project. In this case, sidewalk projects are done fairly frequently throughout the state, and so it shortcuts having to replicate all those efforts.
So that's staff time, that it shortcuts, it allows us to save, but staff time. How about on the bidding itself? What's, is there any historical reference to, how is the bidding process different? You're, are you piggybacking a contract that a joining community has with this vendor or contractor on our project, or how does that work?
The Mojave Educational Services Agreement utilizes a standardized construction cost estimating manual. I believe in this case it's a means manual, and so they prepare their estimate based on the means dollar figures and make the adjustments in that, so. As a, as a way of comparison, this project is right about the engineer's estimate for this project, and substantially below the amount we had budgeted for this project.
Okay, thank you. That's Councilmember Legere.
So Randy, this has been in the works for a while, so help refresh my memory. Where are we, where are we at in the process? We've designed it?
Mayor, Councilman Legere, yes. We have a complete design on this project, completed.
And we've paid for the design?
We have paid our portion of the design, most of the design costs were paid by the Maricopa Association governments under a grant that we received.
So the grant is for the design, is, any of that grant extend to the construction was specifically for the design?
Mayor, Councilman Legere, no, it was strictly for the design.
And as I recall, this particular section was targeted for grants, for what reason? Why were grants awarded? Why did we target this particular area to do sidewalks in? What's the advantage of putting these sidewalks in now rather than putting them in the future?
Mayor, Councilman Legere, the purpose of the sidewalk, first, I think is what you're really getting at. The purpose of the sidewalk is, is to provide sidewalk access to all the residents up in this area. It connects the Boys and Girls Club, the Four Peaks School, and Four Peaks Park on the one end to the Charter School, the middle school, and this commercial area here, so I mean, it's, it's a major link in here, as well as it's a student, you know, student walking link. Matter of fact, I was just out there yesterday and just happened to be, you know, Larry Woodland and I were out there driving and happened to be on the street, and I was kind of amazed at how many students were walking in the street pavement on that street, so.
That helps me, because my recollection is we targeted this particular project because it was pedestrian-friendly primarily for children, so it was about children's safety and them moving between their residence and the school, because there are many other places in Fountain Hills where we could target sidewalks, this was a priority for that particular reason. I understand the rationale for sidewalks, but this goes above and beyond that. That was for, primarily for schoolchildren.
Mayor, Councilman Legere, you are exactly correct.
Okay, thank you.
There's no question that, you know, we are looking at every dollar, so these are some good questions. Councilmember McMahon?
I believe that this project, while worthy, could be postponed until a later date, and I will therefore vote against it.
Councilmember, sorry, Vice Mayor Shamo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thinking more along the terms as, as Councilman Legere had mentioned. I had written down some of the council goals that we have had, and one of them was pedestrian safety slash public safety, safe schools, which is, we've talked quite a bit about, and sidewalk connectivity was a discussion we had at our last work-study session. In fact, we even gave direction to staff to try to focus on the connectivities that really made sense and not some of the ones that we may be able to put off till later time. And I think this meets all three of those tests, so I'm in favor of getting this done, especially, I live in that area, and, and I see the kids walking to school, and I see the parents running up and down Alamosa Drive, and I'm surprised nobody's been hit yet. They're, they're walking in the grass, and that's how they're preventing from themselves from walking in the street. But if you had a handicapped child that was, say, in a wheelchair, and maybe lived up in that section of town, they're going to have to, they're going to have to go out into the street to, to get over to, say, the Boys and Girls Club, or if they went to Four Peaks Elementary, or even if they went to the Charter School and were going the other direction. You know, I'm thinking more in, in public safety of the kids that are in that area, and there certainly is a congregation of them in that area, I see them all the time, so I'll be in favor of the project. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Every capital dollar is real precious here, this time, every dollar in our budgets we're, we need to really watch over. I think a couple of good points were made. This is in alignment with the goals the council set for it, also in alignment with the strategic plan, which is what the public told us was important. And then leveraging the grant monies for at least the design portions appreciated by the staff was good enough to get a piece of there. But connecting the schools, connecting the Boys and Girls Club to the much traffic that they see is something that I think is important, and as limited as we are with dollars, this is an area where if you drive up and down, and you do see that there's conflict between pedestrians and, and vehicles, I think this is an area, and much of our area in Fountain Hills is short of sidewalks, it's just how we've been, we developed early on. There weren't a lot of sidewalks, there are sidewalks to nowhere places, and we're trying to close some of those gaps, this is, I think, a priority area, so I think it is worthy of that consideration. Councilmember Cantino?
Yes, do you have any stats on if there's been any children been hit by a car in the last five years?
Mayor, Councilman Cantino, I mean, we do keep traffic accident reports, I have not researched those to find out if, if and where children have been hit by cars.
Okay. I guess that ever since I've been here, it's been that way, and I just wondered if there's barely been any other reason except for, for children's sake to put that in at this time, and I'm just wondering if we're jumping the gun on this or not?
I think it is, it might be hard to, I think it might be hard to debate whether it's, would make it safer. I think it's, without question, it would certainly make it safer, but I, I value the debate on when to spend. I think that's a valid debate, I don't think the safety one is a real valid debate. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, Mayor, I can, I can vouch for an accident that happened in that particular area back in 1979. I was building my house at the time, and a child got killed, in fact, it was John John, you might remember Keith, near that, near the other intersection at the other end, and primarily because there were no sidewalks there, and he was out running around, and he ran right across the intersection. Now, it wasn't the driver's fault that that happened, but I can testify right now here to this day that when I go down past the Boys and Girls Club, and I see, and I hit the time when everybody's coming out of that, that Four Peaks Elementary School, there are kids standing in the streets on that corner of Alamosa and Del Cambray because there's no sidewalk there. And I literally have honked and stopped and told them to get out of the street, because you got all the parents going this way on Del Cambray, and they're coming up and moving up and down Alamosa, and some of them come down Alamosa and go directly into the parking lot, don't even think that there's traffic coming up on Del Cambray, so, you know, that's, to me, and I lived in that area and I've seen it, that's a dangerous intersection.
That's not just for the children, I think this area, to get people to and from the Four Peaks Community, the community park, the neighborhood park there, or the other direction, getting them to some of the commercial prop businesses there that would benefit from the, from the neighborhood traffic on a safer path than on the shoulder of a road. But, you know, we are all conscious of these dollars, so I think this is a, and I think we've been appropriate by bringing projects forward that have limited our spending, but I think there's little question that you need to continue to improve your community or else you go in the other direction. I think this is a, an improvement that we need to seriously consider in order to improve our communities' quality of life, safety of our children, improved pedestrian. Councilmember McMahon?
All my colleagues have made very good arguments, but I still believe that in view of our financial situation, this could wait another 12 months.
Thank you. The, I think there are some challenges to waiting, I think things could get more expensive. You're not going to benefit from having it there for a year, but as staff said, it is something that could be delayed and still benefit from the grant on the design. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, in the short term, could striping be done along that, that street? I mean, kind of like a bike lane, but more of a pedestrian lane, that it would at least bring attention to that there are people walking in the street?
Mayor, Councilman Hanson, certainly that street could be striped. We generally haven't been striping streets that narrow, and of course, there's always the problem when you, when you only have a stripe, and particularly if you have pedestrian van bicycles, you know, no one's really sure, is this a bike lane, or is this a pedestrian area? And in particular, if you have some of each of those on the same route, it doesn't, you know, certainly keeps, shows the cars are not supposed to be in there, but you still have pedestrian bicycle conflict, even at that.
Tom, Andrew?
Mayor, Council, I think striping is interesting in that it shares the same problem as crosswalks do, where it actually can exacerbate a pedestrian situation by providing a false sense of security, and that is, that is something you don't want to do. Some of the effects of studies have shown with crosswalks, actually ironically, they actually sometimes increase danger because people believe, oh, well, it's striped, I'm, I'm free to walk in this area, and the cars better not get into this area instead of the pedestrians exercising due caution in the absence of a pedestrian walkway. So just that word, just that word of advice and caution.
Good, last thing I'll comment on is we do have a capital budget of, I think, almost 10 million, 9.9 million at this point. It is there to invest in our community's infrastructure and to add to the value of our community, and I'm comfortable with investing this piece of our precious dollars in this investment in order to improve our community, and I think that's what the, the capital is there for. Is there? Yes. What am I going to say? Councilmember Hanson, did you have a question?
Oh, I, is this included in our stimulus wish list?
Mayor, Councilman Hanson, yes, it is. It may not be for very much longer because of the nature of the project and its, its location on a collector street rather than a arterial street and a MAG, forgetting the term, but, so, yes, it is listed on our stimulus list. I doubt that it would fund, yeah, I think it's going to end up getting dropped off. However, if it does not, you can, you can be assured that staff will be back to you recommending an alternate payment method.
Vice Mayor Shamo?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm curious, and I'm looking at these streets, and I'm trying to, I, I know how wide my street is, and I live on El Sabrante, which runs right along the east end of Four Peaks School. Is, is Alamoso, and maybe this is a Tom question, is it about approximately the same width as, as El Sabrante? Because I think Councilman Hanson brings up a good point if we could create something there, but I'm, I'm concerned that if that street is the same width- there, but I'm concerned that if that street is the same width as my street, it won't work because you, I already moved left of center to get around kids that are walking in the street.
Mayor, Councilman R. Shimmel, I think it is, but I wouldn't swear to that.
It's not wider, you think?
I don't.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. That's a concern of mine because when the kids leave the school, they go down El Sabrante and it's, of course, dispersed out into the different areas in the neighborhood. And I know that if they're, if they're walking, not walking off on the curb, I'm left of center to get past them and I'm eyeballing them because I'm still mindful of that accident that happened many years ago. And especially mindful when I leave the council meetings and we have all those soccer games going on down there at the field and everybody's parked along the curb. Now, you have to go left of center. You can't stay right of center and pass those cars and then you worry about kids running up between the cars. I've seen that happen too. I don't know, this, to me, is a, is a passionate issue, especially when it comes to high school kid, or grade school kids and the children just in that area. And I know that there's a lot of kids in that area. We used to watch them skateboarding all over the place and they kinda toned that down now that we built the park. I still gotta, still gotta think this is the better choice. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We've had our good discussion here. Councilmember Hanson, yes?
Why, is there any way to get around taking out trees? It's painful to say, we're going to take out trees.
Mayor, Councilwoman Hanson, we meandered the sidewalk around all the trees, well, virtually all the trees and all the plants and mailboxes and everything in the single-family residential lots. The Fontanas Association specifically asked us, well, in all their funding, we would've had to, absolutely would've had to take out some of the trees. They asked us to take them out, all out. It was them requesting us to do that and we said, works a lot better that way, but, and that's why we designed it that way.
So, then we'll have kids walking on the sidewalks in the summer with no shade.
So, the adjoining property owners want those trees removed?
Absolutely, Mayor. They requested it there. There's at least one tree, several trees, that would've had to been removed anyway, but, and would've been fairly tight around, getting around and getting under the, several of the others. But it was their request that they all go.
All right. Last time, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I know the reason they want those trees removed is because they've been there for 30-plus years and the roots are now getting into their sewer system in that Fontana area.
True.
And they've had to dig up several of those areas and just replace sections of pipes. I mean, if, Kathy, if you went down that, that area, you're gonna see these huge trees that, that are like the ones out here on the Avenue of the Fountains. You know, do they provide shade? Yeah, I'm sure they do. I think, I got a feeling they're wreaking havoc with everybody's sewer system in that area. They're not trees that are native to this particular area, so they need a lot of water. And when they don't get the water because the Fontana Association has cut, has tried to cut the water off of those trees, they start seeking other areas where there's water. And they've been seeming to be very successful at it, so.
Andrew, is it appropriate to ask if this item's not approved? What are, what, how this could be addressed in the future? When, I mean, there's been talk about delay. Is it gonna be re-looked at after a particular amount of time or are there restrictions as to if folks choose to? Councilmember Hanson?
If I may, I would move to table this until the next council meeting.
We can do that, this time?
Yeah, it's not debatable, except for as to the propriety of tabling, so it limits discussion right now.
One second. All right. Any discussion on the motion to table? Thank you very much. I'm in favor of stabling this. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, six, zero.
All right. Quarterly update, thank you very much, Randy. Quarterly update by the Director of Planning and Zoning and the Activities and Projects. Welcome, Mr. Turner.
Good evening, Mayor Schlumpf, members of the council. Just saving, talking to you about some recent developments in planning zoning, some activities that we've recently taken place and then some things that are coming up. So, to begin with, we have recently completed a series of meetings with small groups of local businesses on the recent changes to the sign regulations. We had five meetings with, like I say, small groups of businesses. And in those meetings, we handed out a brochure that we created, which highlights the major changes to the regulations. That brochure emphasizes the changes to the temporary signs that are permitted, both the A-frames and the banners, balloons and pennants. And we also handed out information straight from the ordinance to the attendees with regard to A-frames and the other temporary signs. We invited 33 businesses and we had 15 businesses take us up on the offer to meet. And we have extra brochures in case anyone is interested, we can avail them for brochure. And some of the businesses did want copies and we emailed copies of the brochures to Coming up here real soon, in the high school parking lot, we're going to be holding a household hazardous waste collection event. That will take place on February the 28th, Saturday, from 9:00 in the morning to 1:00 in the afternoon. We are financing, partially financing that with a grant from the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. And this afternoon, I found out, we also received $3,000 from Fort McDowell Yewa Pine Nation for that project.
Richard, on that, before you go, household hazardous waste, what are some of the items that you see there?
Glad you asked that question. We're gonna be looking for paint, pesticides, old motor oil, herbicides, old pool chemicals, things like that.
Sorry, this is a deal here.
I might be the first one in line, actually. We have publicized this with articles or ads in the newspaper. We've got a flyer on it. And we've also put information in the town publication, the avenues, and I believe we have a blurb on Channel 11 as well. And we also are busy in planning and zoning with a lot of other projects. We're currently finishing up the latest edition of the Land Use Analysis and Statistical Report. And for that project, we've enlisted the help of a volunteer who has computer skills and we've saved the town the money that we had in the budget for that project, which is $5,000. We'll also be, the Planning Commission has scheduled to hear the Plan Area Development Zoning District, which is proposed on February the 12th, and the Town Council will hear that on March the 5th. The Smart Growth Scorecard is something we're working on. We recently, staff recently attended a workshop on that. That's a state program. It's very important for us to fill that out if we're interested in obtaining any future grants from the state.
Richard, Councilmember Cantino has a question.
The recycling, we have to pay for that on the computers? You said there was a $5,000 budget on that?
Oh, the Land Use Analysis and Statistical Report, we had the budget at $5,000 for assistance in preparing that, but we're not gonna spend that. We've enlisted the assistance of a volunteer to help us, and so that's money that's been saved.
Okay.
The electronics recycling event, we've already held two of these. The next one is scheduled for March the 14th, that's Saturday. And the first two have been very successful and we hope, we believe this will be successful as well. General Plan Update is an ongoing project. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission Committee that's studying that is prior to their next meeting, again, that's February the 12th. The Planning and Zoning Commission is going to be holding a work-study session on proposed alternatives for changes to the Cut-Fill-R retaining wall regulations. That's going to be held on February the 26th, also prior to their regularly scheduled meeting. And not on the list here, but as I'm sure you're all aware, we're very much involved in trash hauling recycling issue. And we've scheduled a meeting of the Environmental Group for next Tuesday, 10th of February, and we're planning a town hall late in February as well. So, there are a lot of other, more minor types of programs and projects that Planning and Zoning is working on, but that pretty much hits the main projects and activities.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Cantino?
Yes. How often do those trash bins get emptied out there for the recycling? I noticed last weekend, there were a lot of them that were really full and overflowing.
Mayor Schlumpf, Councilmember Cantino in the audience, and see, we have Mr. Reese, who's very familiar, I believe, with.
They get emptied twice a week, once on Monday and once on Thursday.
Okay. I, last weekend, they had a, two pickup trucks just unloading everything there was and putting them in there. And I sat back and I just, you know, I really wondered what was happening with that. And there wasn't any monitoring on Saturday, so that's why I was kinda curious. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Richard? Thank you for that update and letting us know what's going on and the additional communication with the community on those various issues.
Thank you, Richard.
All right. Next item of consideration of adopting council goals for fiscal year 2009, 2010. Mr. Davis?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Council, in October, October 5th of 2008, council met in a prioritization exercise at the community center and we examined 60 different areas of the city services and we call these areas of service. From that exercise, the council prioritized a number of areas for further discussion. In our retreat on January 9th of 2009, this list was reduced down to 30 areas of focus. And from there, the staff was able to gather those together and create, for your consideration, 13 goals for 2009, 2010. We have had, held follow-up meetings with staff in order to assign stewardship of each goal to a department or individuals. And we have also considered all of the individual initiatives that came out of the January 9th discussion as well. So, in some cases, you're able to formulate a goal and in addition to that, there were additional ideas that came out as to how to realize that goal. Now, it'll become clear as we go along. In the interest of time, I'm going to go through these rather quickly because if I read every word here, I'd be here for a while. Again, there are 13 goals and so we'll, we'll start with goal number one. Keep in mind that some of the dates that are assigned to these goals are subject to change as we encounter conditions and we come into contact with additional information. As Eisenhower once said, "No, no plan survives contact with the enemy." So, this is a plan. We're gonna do our best to realize this. The first goal that you set was to ensure that the strategic plan continues to be implemented and updated. And I was pleased to see two of our esteemed strategic planning advisory commissioners here with us today. There was initially a date of December 31st assigned to the completion of this exercise, but additional feedback from SPAC caused us to rethink that and place the date more in the neighborhood of March. So, we put March 31st and 2010 to complete that work. But we're going to work with you to make sure that those resources are available to complete this very important work that really is the framework for planning in the town. Goal number two, ensure development of the former state trust land proceeds in a way which is most responsible and beneficial to the town. Included in that is, of course, reviewing development applications, the assignment of applications to senior planner to ensure consistency and accuracy and, of course, also conduct a comprehensive coordinated team review of each development application. Goal number three, maintain and develop good roads and walkways within fiscal constraints. One of the things that we want to do is develop and present to the council a fiscal plan for addressing the resurfacing of our arterials by December 31st of this year and we think probably will be to you even earlier than that. Continue to address maintenance of roadways. Continue to implement the five-year CIP plan as funds become available. Again, emphasis on fiscal responsibility as we move forward. Moving right along here. Next, paying special attention to downtown sidewalks and other walkability issues and particularly with regard to pursuing grant funding such as state sidewalks of schools and continuing to design and build gap walkways in the town center to provide crosswalks as per ADA standards, again, within fiscal constraints. Goal number four, make optimal use of trails and expand public access to parks and open space, doing this by enhancing public access to regional open space. We want to continue to support McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission outreach and education efforts. We want to support efforts of McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission to distribute information at our fairs and other events. And then, number three, if the county's transportation plan for regional trails is approved, we want to utilize Sonoran Conservancy's trailblazers to construct the trail from the regional park trail system into the McDowell Mountain Preserve. Okay? Goal number five, maintain service level and functionality of parks. We're gonna continue to address the grass and water quality at Fountain Park and specifically continuing our turf enhancement program at Fountain Park and continue to use an aquatic consulting service to help maintain the lake water quality. Also, we want to develop a park maintenance program for the park system and present that to you by December of 2009. Goal number six is to explore the need for an environmental commission with specific responsibility to develop new measures and support existing initiatives that improve the quality of our natural environment. In order to do that, we need to identify other communities that have utilized such Goal number seven is to maintain and promote our small-town character by enhancing public-private collaboration to develop new and improve existing special events. We had a presentation today on St. Patrick's Day. I want to continue to support that event and expand that. Through the Recreation Division, we want to work on expanding the Extravaganza Event in 2010, possibly to include some elements from the Kiwanis Club. Having a little bit of trouble here, I'm sorry, little technical difficulties. See, work with ADOG through the Recreation Division for the second year of an expanded Pause in the Park event in Fountain Park. And there are two new events that, in keeping with your request that we expand the number of events that I'll be proposing to you this year. One is an event focused on volunteerism, combining our volunteer fair with an opportunity for citizens to participate in a community service project day that we're naming Make a Difference Day. This obviously fulfills some of the desires the council has had to expand volunteer opportunities in our community and to recruit more volunteers, but it also is a day that allows citizens to feel some ownership in the community and to participate in one or two hours of community service to spruce up and paint and trim, trim the town and it's been a great success in other communities. The other event is a Public Safety and Emergency Preparedness Expo, where we can combine aspects of a traditional public safety event such as Fire Prevention Week, as sometimes hosts, with an actual emergency preparedness event that'll help our citizens prepare for crises or catastrophes and otherwise get themselves in a situation where they're a little bit more prepared if we so much as get people to put together a If we so much as get people to put together a 72-hour kit for their family, some folks have told me that that's about the most important thing we can do, but put them in touch with resources that will help their families get prepared for any eventuality. And, goal number eight: Enhance customer service and enrich our citizens' lives by expanding access to town offerings and services, developing innovative approaches to service delivery, and developing/implementing methods for gathering citizen input. That's a big one. One of the things we want to do specifically is expand our home-delivered meals program for seniors. I had mentioned also that we want to grow the volunteer program and cultivate volunteer opportunities, and we think the Make a Difference Day is probably a key to that. In addition to that, we want to fully implement a program that we started not too long ago called Fountain of Innovation, which celebrates staff, volunteer, and elected official efforts to save money, to save cash, or enhance the quality of our services without increasing cost, either one. We also would like to provide the council with quarterly updates and an annual comprehensive report on the effectiveness of the new e-fountain program, and to do that by January 15th of 2010. In addition, we'd like to sponsor two town hall meetings during the fiscal year. Goal number nine: Demonstrate organizational progress to citizens and promote transparency in government. We want to explore the possibility of one-day building permits for simple projects, so looking at some of our more complex processes and see where we can simplify, we can make that easier without compromising our own responsibilities as well to ensure that what is built in Fountain Hills is responsible and beneficial to the community. One of the things we'll be doing is examining best practices in other jurisdictions where they have employed these types of methodologies. Next, Implement a Performance Measures Program. Now, in order to do that, we have to make sure that our budget is reformatted to align itself with programs rather than broad areas. That, in effect, by breaking our budget into more identifiable sections or areas known as programs, also promotes transparency, as the budget becomes a more readable document. It's just a methodology of taking a very broad area and breaking it into smaller programs so people can understand what's really being funded there. But it also allows us, as we begin to measure our expenditures in specific programs, allows us to begin applying performance measures to see how we're doing in completing some of our initiatives or in realizing some of our goals. It also will allow us to participate in cross-jurisdictional benchmarking exercises as well. In fact, that's what I note here. In Utah, was part of a 70-city benchmarking exercise that proved to be very helpful, as we were able to share data and performance measures across jurisdictions. And finally, we want to update departmental performance measures by December 31st of this year. Next is, this ought to say expand transparency. We don't want to expand government, but expand transparent government. We would like to specifically add ordinances, resolutions, and proclamations to the town's website by December 31st of 2009. An innovative idea that came out of our staff discussions included holding one Meet the Town Day on a regular workday that would include departmental overviews and tours of town hall, utilizing volunteers as the guides, and we'd like to do this in the first half of the fiscal year. So we could actually invite people in to come see what is it we do inside this building. Sometimes they don't get past the reception desk there. We mentioned that we would like to hold two town hall meetings per fiscal year and work with the school district to videotape and air departmental profiles. Again, it's allowing people to see what we actually do. And finally, continue to develop a system of program budgeting which facilitates the communication of budget information to citizens, as I mentioned. Number 10 is, a goal that has to do with economic development. We want to enhance the town's economic base by maintaining strong business relations, developing and implementing innovative strategies to bring beneficial businesses to town, supporting an environment conducive to new business development, and developing initiatives designed to help businesses succeed. This has been assigned to our new Economic Development Administrator. Specifically, she would like to evaluate the existing business visitation retention program by July, enhance business visitation retention, and come up with a plan by August 2009. Work with the town center, and I should catch up so you can read that. Mic caught up? Yep. Work with the town center merchants group to develop and facilitate networking opportunities, business vitality, and marketing and promotional opportunities using the Main Street Four Point approach. De-develop contacts with Fort McDowell, the Chamber, and other business groups, utilizing those relationships for mutual benefit. Continue town involvement with BVAC. Evaluate the business attraction program. Develop a strategy to encourage business locations within the town when it's starting in August of 2009. I think this is a very aggressive approach, and I think it's one that I think you've been looking for for some time. And so we're, the groundwork, I believe, has been laid by Kate, and I think now we're ready to go. Go forward, and we're very excited about this goal. Goal 11: Build and strengthen internal, external relationships, utilizing mutual respect as the basis. We want to develop opportunities for more council-staff interaction. Next, we want to develop a new council orientation training focused on the roles of council and staff that promotes mutual respect, and we'd like to do that by March 1st of 2010. Next one is continue downtown business and chamber relations efforts. Pursue regular meetings with Fort McDowell, and we had such a meeting today. It was very successful, and we're really laying the groundwork for joint economic development efforts in the future, I think, based on today's meeting. We want meetings at least, twice a year between the governing boards. You've also asked that we look at reducing e-sessions, possibly by forming a specific nominating committee to review applications and recommend appointments to the council. There is a model for such a process that is in effect in Avondale. We'll be looking at that model and have something to you by October 1st of 2009, and I think Bev is actually heading up that area. Next, of course, making the tribe feel welcome at town events, endeavors, and activities, and promoting the town's relationship with the school district by holding three joint meetings per year. Number 12 has to do with fiscal responsibility while maintaining organizational functional integrity. We want to continue this idea of meeting in October, that extra meeting in October. We thought that was very beneficial and helped us kick off our discussion. In fact, it would have been very difficult to have our retreat in January had we not had that previous discussion, so we want to keep doing that.
And the Wii tournament.
Oh, and of course, the Wii tournament at the end of the day, that will become a tradition. Submit a mid-year state of the budget report to the council by December 31st. I think that's very important. And submit quarterly CIP updates to the council for reevaluation of capital needs and priorities. So I know we've done that once already this year. What we want to do is quarterly, bring you back a report on where we are with regard to capital projects, and have you take another look at them, and we'll let you know where we are fiscally, and make recommendations to you as to what we think maybe we ought to hold off on, or maybe what we think we can go forward on, similar to what we did last work-study session. Okay? And then finally, goal number 13 is to support initiatives which enhance public safety in our community. We talked a lot about the community-oriented policing plan, and John and I will be working on such an initiative by September of 2009. And then, of course, providing semi-annual updates to the council by the fire chief to include an assessment of service level. We're going to keep our eye on that as well. With that, I know Shawna is probably watching this with notepad in hand of whatever changes you would like to make, and so I'll answer any questions that I can. If I can, I also have staff here who can help me address those.
Thank you, Rick. First, I look for council to make a motion to accept our fiscal goals for '09, '10.
Make a motion.
Second?
All right. Are there any speaker cards on this?
No, Mayor.
Any discussion on this? Thanks for going over that completely.
Very good, Rick. I left out half of it.
You read most of it.
Well, I read your faces, and it just looked like you wanted to hear the whole thing. Try to read my audience.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Yes. Can we review, does anybody else have any suggestions or questions?
Sure. Go for it.
Okay. On goal number two, and this is just a small one, but the way it reads about being responsible and beneficial to the town, with a capital T, that makes it sound like the town, the town government, and I think that should include the citizens as well, because it's not just beneficial for the government.
Goal number two, maybe switch it to...
Community?
Community. Would that be good?
Community work, for you.
Instead of the town, the last word.
Yeah, community.
That captures it better. Thank you, Cass.
Very good. On goal number five, maybe the possibility, and I don't know if anybody's interested in this, but taking another look at the soft-start concept or other alternatives to be able to run the fountain longer, kind of keep that out there, but we've heard that a lot from citizens about wanting to see the fountain run longer.
Can I address that? One thing, I really, I talked with Mark just a little bit, I don't know if he's still here. I talked with Mark a little bit about the idea that we could actually, possibly, we'd have to try this for a year, reduce costs at the fountain by running, doing less startups, and thereby being able to run the fountain more minutes than we currently are at one time. What I'm saying is that the estimate right now, talking to SRP and to our park staff, is that more than 50% of the cost of running the fountain is in starting it up. So the theory is right now, that hasn't been shown empirically, is that if you started it less times but ran it longer, you might actually be able to reduce costs and still provide a larger window of runtime for the fountain. So we'll be discussing this a little bit more and testing this hypothesis, and that is one idea that we have thought of.
Okay. I just didn't see that.
Councilmember Hanson, I think on the soft-start, we did discuss it a lot, but I think maybe if there is, maybe it'd be best if there is someone that brings new information forward that might get to our town manager that would show that there might be a cost savings or ability to run longer.
Let's go to any alternatives that we could...
Any alternatives. Yeah, to enhance the, good.
Okay. And then jumping to number seven, about maintaining our small town and the events, there's a very strong possibility that the Chamber is getting out of the community event business as far as the Luminary is go and the Thanksgiving Day Parade. And so I think if we want those events to continue, we're going to have to look at either incorporating it or some, we're going to have to take an active part to save those two events. So I think we need to incorporate that somewhere, since we're kind of specific on events.
What would you recommend that we look at? Possibility of greater support for Chamber events, or, well, I'm trying to put this into words.
I think they're looking financially.
Mm-hmm.
Where the costs have gone. So, I mean, it may be just putting something about working with the Chamber on maintaining the community events, because those are really community events. They aren't Chamber events.
The Thanksgiving Day Parade is getting increasingly expensive to produce.
Everybody else feel the same way about that?
Councilmember Shimon?
Well, I'm trying to figure out what we're suggesting here, that the town add additional funds to those events to help keep events going, because I'm concerned that we're not going to have the funds either.
No.
I think what I've seen of late is where the town has worked more on the public-private type of a partnership where by some of the law enforcement costs or some of those things have been absorbed, or some of the lighting fixtures have stayed up an extra day for an additional event. I think that cooperation is going to be necessary to leverage what we may already have in place or we may be able to provide at a lesser cost.
And I know Frank Farrar is yelling at the TV right now, saying barricades, and that was one also that he had brought up before, is the provision of barricades at the Thanksgiving Day.
And I think, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
But we're only charging him the costs of what our costs are to put those barricades up. We're not making a profit on it.
I don't believe we are.
So if that's no different than us changing the fund.
It's an in-kind thing, yeah.
You know, but if we could find, see, the problem is that when you get to the barricade thing, is you've got to have the street department do it. You can't have volunteers doing it. They put it up wrong, then somebody's liable.
Ah, sure. Right.
And my intent wasn't to get down to the nitty-gritty on how we would do it. It would just be not to let it slip through the cracks. And all of a sudden, it comes up, and it's like, well, we're not having a Thanksgiving Day Parade this year, and, oh, wish we would have had the discussion back in the spring.
Mayor? I'm certainly encouraged to have discussions about it, but I'd be cautious as to where we go with it, you know, so.
Councilmember Cantino?
Thanks, Mayor. I think that we have to take and keep in mind, I think what Cassie's looking at, Councilwoman Cass Hanson, here we go, that the parade is getting larger and larger every year, and we have to make a decision how we want to run it and what we want to do and how the costs. And I think that's what we're coming up with, is how do we decide that, so we'll have to put that on a, you know, some type of a work session or something like that to do that. I think that's where we need to go.
How about, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Lee.
Just trying to translate this. I think it's a good idea. How about if we have a, add a goal that talks about exploring, Cassie, I'll just put this up and see if this meets your needs there. Something like, explore cost-sharing opportunities with Chamber regarding major events, or be more specific, explore cost-sharing opportunities with Chamber with respect to the Thanksgiving Parade. What was the other one you mentioned?
Luminary is.
Luminary. Add both of those. Budgeting, we don't know if we have the money or not, but I think we can certainly engage in that dialogue, and if we engage in that dialogue, and if we don't do it this time, this fiscal year, that may add some hope to keep those events going, knowing that there may be some support going forward. So that's what I would suggest. Explore cost-sharing opportunities with the Chamber with respect to Thanksgiving Parade and luminary activities.
Which could include other organizations stepping up to, at least puts it on the...
It puts the discussion out there, which I think is what...
And that's all, that's the only...
There's about eight people who put on that parade.
And you're one of them, right?
Right. Proud of it.
So is that something we want to add?
I think that's a good bullet.
Certainly, yeah. I've noted that you could probably add it as an amendment to what you have right now and as you approve it.
Sure.
Was that under goal seven?
I put it under seven.
Or seven, yes.
All right, so it'd be F. All righty. We good. All right. Is there anything additional that you...
Yeah.
Yes?
Goal number eight, I thought maybe that this would be a place to go, but maybe just making sure that we're continuing to work on our website and helping it to become as user-friendly and easier to navigate, and just kind of keep that as a way to, you know, be in touch with the folks. And maybe try and look at developing... way to, you know, be in touch with the folks. And maybe try and look at developing a, like a web-based survey-type tool. I just didn't want the website to not get any.
And actually, the web-based survey tool is in process right now.
Right.
So.
And just real quick on nine, um, and I don't know if this is where this would go, uh, in talking about organizational progress, um, after the staff's retreat, um, it, they, it resulted in a number of good observations by the staff and comments, and, um, some of those involved exploring the feasibility and possible budgetary benefit of in-house legal services. And I didn't know if that would be something that would, we'd want to add under this as just seeing, you know, is it a cost benefit or, or not?
And where did you add that?
I put it under nine under organizational progress. I didn't really know where.
I'm not sure. I mean, I think that would be under, it seems like most anything in our operations day-to-day you'd look at. Was there anything else in here that would fall, would capture that?
This is ridiculous.
If that's, uh, transparency, maybe that's.
It's more of a budgetary thing.
Yeah.
Goal 12.
I think that is a goal 12, but not, not, I wouldn't specifically make it one particular thing, Andrew. Um, I would, would make it just as we've had to make tough decisions here late across the board is to continuously look at, um, cost savings, organizational efforts, as well as, um, what are some of the tools we're utilizing now as flow, um, job flow.
Workflow.
Workflow. Um, continuous look at those items as needs change within our community or opportunities open up, something like that.
Well, and I know it was looked at like the mid-'90s, I mean, quite a long time ago, and it was decided that it was, you know, at that time, it was more cost-effective to do it on a contract basis. But I don't know how that would be now.
I think that'd be something, you know, that's part of the budgetary process for discussion all the time, for each, you know.
We can add, uh, a portion that says continue to utilize workflow analysis to identify potential, uh, financial savings.
Yeah, or, and, and then maybe, you know, another item would be, um, if we need to draw it out here further, consideration of in-house or, um, contract, um.
Consolidation, um, I don't.
Services, yeah, in-house, I mean, everybody does it, uh, in the private industry, you know, in-house versus contract services for, um, operations. There's things we've done where, you know, with some of the landscaping, um, moved some to contractor, and I'm sure there's times we brought it back in the house and, just like the private industry tends to do that to save money when they think they can save money with an in-house operation versus a contract.
So I have, continue to utilize workflow analysis to identify cost savings via contracting, consolidation of services, et cetera. I left the et cetera open. Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It's, yeah, I got a musical, and I don't know which one, but, yeah.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I'm good.
The King and I.
That's right, that's right. Okay, then, real quick, one more. I'm, I'm, under 10, uh, if we can have in there, continue to review and revise outdated, overreaching ordinances, codes, policies, procedures. And that's kind of for.
Which one is that?
To be beneficial for businesses. Number 10.
I think that, that's a good way to spell it, because it, goal 10 is in that, in essence, uh, that. It is to enhance.
Strengthen the business.
Yeah, if there's a way for us to adjust something we're doing that would not detrimentally impact quality of life but would enhance the business success, that's good. But how did you word it?
Well, I continue what staff is already doing. Um, continue to review and revise outdated, overreaching ordinances, codes, policies, and procedures.
I think that's, that's great. And it, so it's not necessarily just businesses, it's residential, it's community-wise. I think that's good. Is council comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So add that as another. And as we've gone through since our, um, our meeting, our, our goal retreat here that, that our town manager ran so well in the comfortable confines of our community center, um, there's been feedback, uh, from council based on what, uh, town manager Davis prepared from all the council members over the last several weeks. But, um, appreciate your feedback, Councilman Hanson.
Councilperson, yes.
Cass.
Cassie.
Any other comments on our goals? Rick, I'd like you to review them one more time, if you wouldn't mind.
Can we start that PowerPoint for me, uh, four times?
I'm getting started. I'm just kidding. So we've got a motion and a second, and we've got some amendments to our motion. How do we handle those?
Recommended as revised. Can they just say that?
If the, the motion maker allows for all the amendments that have been discussed in the second, it encourages.
Who was our motion maker way back when?
Councilmember Cantino and Councilmember McMahon.
Are you guys comfortable with all the additions that have been made, or?
Yes, sir.
All right. McMahon, yes. You're good with your second?
Second.
All right. Any other comments? I mean, nothing from the public. All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor six zero.
Thank you much. All right, consideration of adopted council goals. No, I'm just kidding.
Wait, wait till my budget presentation.
Discussion with possible directions to staff regarding Fire Rock litigation. Andrew, we've got a motion here.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just, you know, for the public certification, in order to get any direction moving forward with discussions in litigation, a public item is required. So every time we have any session in which we're going to seek direction on how to move forward, we need to come back in a public session and do that, and that's what this is intended to do.
Vice Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And with that said, I'd like to move to direct you, the mayor, and the town attorney, and outside lit, litigation, litigation council to proceed as recommended in executive session.
I'll second.
Second.
All right, we've got a second. Um, anyone from the public here?
No, ma'am.
Um, anyone, any discussion here? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor six zero.
All right, thank you. Anything from the town manager here?
No questions.
I didn't really, I didn't.
Oh, thank you. And Councilmember Hanson just recused herself from the vote.
Five zero.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. We've got, uh, council discussion directed at the town manager. I don't see any in there, but we do have a summary of council requests. I know one item was the, uh, working with the McDowell Mountain Preservation Commission to, work with that commission to get them answers to the.
Twin Peaks.
Twin Peaks, yeah, regarding the Twin Peaks presentation we had.
And what you would like us to do is to develop, uh, explore some options from our jurisdiction of how we could help them out in the preservation of that area.
Yeah, or make, yeah, I think that's good. Answer some of those questions and figure out if there are any other questions. There are questions. Answer those questions. Anything else in summary of the council request? I think that was it. All right, look for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
A second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.